We'd like to call the December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Wall City Council meeting to order. Carolyn, would you please come on roll?
Hoffman?
Here.
Morgan? Stan Anderson?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Hawk?
Here.
Mike Anderson?
Here.
Would you have a phone?
Okay, thank you. Stan is saying the question will last. Deputy Austin, would you lead us, please?
I would lead us to divide the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have an order of business for your emergencys?
No.
Do we have attendance on Zoom?
Councilman Stan Anderson is on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Would I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Zach has moved?
Second.
Rick has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, does anyone need to declare conflict of interest because of anything on the agenda?
I believe I will with item sixteen.
Okay. Item sixteen. For Zach, okay, for the DOT. All right. In your packet was the minutes from the December fifth meeting. Assume everyone's reviewed those. Would I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Dan moved?
Second.
Mike seconded. Any questions? Revisions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item number nine is the City of Wall Fire Department and Library bills today. The total for the city is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. The Fire Department total is seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifteen cents. And the library is three hundred and eight. Are there any questions on any of those claims? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mike moved.
Second.
And Dan seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Also in your packet and ready for your review is the expense budget, which brings us up to December two thousand and twenty-four. The ambulance financials, as well as the community center schedule. And you will notice it is complete for what happened in November, what has happened so far in December, and what is scheduled for the rest of the month. Are there any questions or comments about any of those reports that were in your packet? Hearing or seeing none. We will move on. Is there anyone in the, from the public today that would like to discuss or express concerns to the council? With any issue on or not on the agenda, you would have three minutes to speak.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that the city, Garrett, looks, the lights just look fabulous. It's not a concern or anything, but it just, I really like the way the town looks with all the work that she put in to do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Someone said last night it was like a Hallmark.
Yep.
Main street.
Whoa.
What?
All we needed was the snow that all took down.
But thank you, Don, truly. It is beautiful. Okay, that brings us to item number twelve, Wall Economic Development Report. Rashawn, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
All right, so I have a whole lot today to report on. I did attend Elevate's annual meeting and their Christmas mixer. Their new, they elected a new board chair, which is Tom Weaver. And then they had some statistics of what they've done over the years and that, so I would kind of just run through a few of those things. One of the things I found interesting is something that I'm going to work with in economic development is that for every five tradespersons that retires, we're only replacing three, and this is causing a huge gap in trade workers. So I'm going to try to help facilitate bringing more trades into Wall. They said that Rapid City is an up and coming city. They're thirty-sixth in the state, thirty-sixth in the U.S. And we're in the top one hundred eligible cities in the U.S. See here. When it comes to bringing in businesses, we as EDDs are competing with over three thousand EDDs across the states for approximately two hundred and fifty companies that are looking to move and relocate. So we will hear no a lot, but the answer there is just to keep trying. Eventually, we'll get a yes. They are bringing in a new Philo Suma, Philo pseudo, pseudicals. Always mix that word up, which is plant-based medicines into the D labs. And they're partnering with the Monument and South Dakota School of Mines and Technology for research and development on that. They gave an award out to Quasay Alahay, who helped, just helped Rapid City grow over the years and helped set up Elevate. And then this is sort of the thing I'm going to run through on this sheet of paper here, what they've kind of gone over and what Elevate has brought in to their community. They brought in over, they helped two hundred and fifty businesses they went out and communicated with, which is one thing I'm going to be doing here in Wall. They've had forty-five plus military affiliates supported and a hundred and seventy-five plus workforce reports provided. Business retention and expansion. They've attracted seven new businesses, eight business startups, and two thousand, two hundred thousand risk capital facilitated to local companies. They've got two incubated companies graduated and up and running, and eight onsite visits by prospective companies and site selectors. They've advocated for two million in grants. They've done four pre-legislative planning meetings and held eleven legislative increased maintenance score, maintained scores. They taught the legislators on how well they work with economic development and that kind of stuff. And for investor relationships, they have a hundred and six new investors, a hundred and nine new business stories. They've done twenty-one investor spotlight articles for one of those. They've done thirty-five hundred attendee events and fifty-five ribbon cuttings, which have been mostly small businesses. And that's pretty much it for Elevate for their year. I am setting up coffee connections. I think you guys have heard me say that. The first one will be February twelfth. We moved that date. It was the tenth, but it'll now be the twelfth at nine a.m. It'll be hosted at First Interstate Bank. We're bringing in an HR consultant in, Senova Nicholson, who, she's an HR consultant, so her thing is dodging dangers and the pitfalls of HR. Like I said, starting after the new year, I'm going to get out in the community and meet the business members and see what our business community needs. I have questionnaires for them to fill out so that we can get things up and running and help individual businesses. I'm here to help existing businesses as well as get the IP part up and running. So I'll be out to come and talk to you all, so open your doors and welcome me. I appreciate that. And then we as a board have started working with Dakota Resources on their bold program, which is building organizations for local development to level up our organization to create a thriving community here in Wall. And we recently just had Golden West has approved us to place a sign on their land off of Fourth Avenue. And that should be put up after the first of the year to advertise the industrial park. And that's pretty much all I can offer. Anybody have any questions?
Rashawn, I have one question on the meeting at First Interstate. That was February twelfth.
February twelfth at nine a.m.
Nine a.m. Thank you.
Yep, and that'll go out on social media and they'll be marketing for that as well, so we can get people to come to that.
And how long do those last?
They're about an hour long. They'll have like a half hour or forty-five minute presentation and then questions for, from business leaders and community members. So we'll be bringing in other tax consultants, succession consultants, that kind of stuff to help the business community manage and grow their businesses.
Perfect. All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, item number thirteen, approve a pay increase for certification. Will you speak to that, Carolyn?
Yes, so Gary Vernon passed another certification for wastewater. And so typically, when they pass that, then they get a pay increase of fifty cents.
That's retro to December first.
Yeah, it would be.
Run back into the first December. I move to approve the fifty cent pay increase for certification.
Okay, it's been moved by Dan.
Second.
It was second by Rick. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approve vacation payout.
So I have not been able to use my vacation this year, and when I do, then I work overtime and it takes off my vacation. So I had requested to have that paid out for this year's accumulation of vacation. I can carry three weeks over, but I get three weeks every year, so I can't give you, request that to be paid out.
What's the payout on that?
Well, I won't know because I am using some vacation next week. And, but I don't know how much I might get used and still have to like answer emails or something like that, so it might, I won't know exactly.
So moved.
Okay, so Zach has moved to approve paying out Carolyn for unused vacation. Is there a second?
Okay.
Mike has seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Fourth Avenue Project Engineering over budget.
Well, we had that meeting for the industrial park and Tim had indicated that the engineering fees had gone over budget on that project, on the Fourth Avenue.
Fourth Avenue. He brought that up. Not, it's not related to the industrial park, but it was related to the Fourth Avenue. Okay?
He said he was going to get me some numbers, but I have not seen them yet.
Okay. So we're really not in a position to try to make a decision at all, are we?
I wouldn't think so. Now covering the mountain and then the explanation correct.
Right. Okay. So with that being said, we're just going to move forward to item number sixteen. And that is the DOT snow plowing agreement. That also was in your packet. And this deals with snow removal on the service road and what the payment is going to be, which they changed. Or what precipitated this was in conversation, I discovered that both this snow plowing agreement was way beyond. It should have been renewed and addressed, along with the maintenance of South Boulevard. That one is still being worked on by Mike Carlson, so he will have that to us in the near future. But this one deals with snow plowing, so they were able to get that to that, to us. And so this is just agrees to what the payment would be and how that payment would work. The term is to July one, two thousand and twenty-seven, and just indicates that the plowing would happen on the frontage road on the other side of interstate, south side of interstate, along that service road. So did any of you have any, the term, the, the insurance is similar to what it was before? The amendment, the notices, all of that stayed primarily the same, so.
Let's see, the getting paid for it's different, because it used to be per hour, now it's a five thousand, up to five thousand, I guess.
Exactly. And the city will provide an IMI bill to the state at the end of each winter season during the term of this agreement. So does anyone have any thoughts or questions about this, or would I have a motion to approve?
And Garrett, my supervisor said he could stockpile some of the recent two. So you don't have to come out and get all the time if you want to stockpile some.
Oh, okay.
Stockpile where?
Wherever, if you have a spot, I guess, to stockpile, but if not, you can come out and get it.
We usually, we have a little, made a little bunk inside of one of our blue buildings, so we usually just get a hunch and push it in there, so. Appreciate it.
And by supervisor, you're referring to?
Tom Beadle.
Tom Beadle, okay?
And this is Stan, what?
Stan Sol, yeah.
To, what did you call it?
Stockpile.
Stockpile, okay. All right. Well, that's good news. All right. So does this, do I have a motion to approve this upgraded version? Because our last one was in two thousand and nine, and this is our updated version. Does, would I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, Dan moved to approve?
Second.
Rick has seconded. Any other questions or comments? Zach has indicated that he is recusing himself. All of, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I will get that signed and get that back to them. Okay, that brings us to access agreement with GFNP. And I think you have, you have knowledge of this, right, Garrett?
Yeah, we talked about it earlier this year, and they just wanted to put some more gravel down on the road to Old Town Dam. And once they'll pay for everything to be put on, and after that, it's our responsibility to keep the maintenance up on it, so. Just want to make sure people can get out there and use it.
And that's a road along the west side, correct?
Yeah.
It needs attention.
It's been a while.
Yeah. So will it be all the way from golf course, return on golf course road, then west, all the way to the dam?
Direction is that?
All the way to the station?
All the way to the, not all the way to the station.
Okay.
Just from golf course to probably the, where the boat ramp is.
Okay.
At Great Town, down in that circle. Yeah.
Old Town. We are talking Old Town. Okay. Any other questions or comments about this? Because it specifies the grading amount and, and it would be a hundred percent. The funding of the project is covered by GFP, but we're going to do the work, some of the work, right, Garrett? So, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mike? Mike moved. Zach seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Right, resolution twenty-four eleven, which is a contingency transfer. Carolyn, help us understand this.
So every year in the budget, we have a contingency line of sixty thousand. And so then that just moves money out of that line item to wherever it's needed. And since I'd already done the supplemental by ordinance, I don't have enough time to get that published and all that by the end of the year. So this allows a one-time approval with the resolution to move money from that contingency to wherever it needs to. And this is actually into my fund dealing with payroll since I'm asking for the payout.
Okay. All right. Any questions about that, thoughts? If not, may I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-four eleven, which is a one-time supplemental contingent?
Transfer, no supplement. It just transfers.
Oh. I was reading the supplemental appropriation contingency transfer part. Do we cross that out, or is that okay to have that?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
I make sure it's understood. It's just a transfer. It's just to a different line item.
Okay, sorry. I was a little too specific. All right. Dan has moved?
Mike moved.
Oh, Mike moved.
Second.
And Dan's seconded. You guys are too quiet over there. Okay, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Carolyn. Your finance officer report, please.
So last week I attended the South Dakota Municipal Board meeting, and we had a, our executive board had a meeting first, and then we got together with the county for the evening and had a meal and networked and stuff. But for our actual board meeting, the update on what legislation is, our director is kind of nervous about what it's going to be because there's so many new people in the legislation now. And with the new administration and things, she's indicated that we aren't bringing anything new. We're just going to try to fight the battles that might be there. So in case you hear anything about that, it's just, we're going to kind of stay status quo and just try to defeat anything that comes against us, not bring anything bold, so. And then the website agreement or the new website was in the budget, but this is the agreement that I need approval for myself to sign off on. This will start in February of two thousand and twenty-five, and they will take our existing website and redo it and do all of that. You'll be able to use it on your phone a lot more. It'll be like an app rather than trying to go through. It, it's just going to look a lot better, and I think the maintenance of it's going to be a lot easier. Currently, it's kind of complicated when we need to add anything to our website. And so I'm going to go with the new company. And we just need approval on that to sign the agreement, the agreement for that.
Okay, so the total per year is going to be twelve thousand, but it's in two payments, or how's that?
So the, to get started and it's going to be the, yeah, the twelve four to get started and for them to do all that work. And then each year after that, with a possible five percent increase renewal, each annual support will be six thousand nine hundred.
Okay, so that, the twelve four just helps us get it switched over?
Yep, that's our support fee and then they getting it all revamped and stuff.
Okay, very good.
Carolyn, does that cover the first year, the twelve four?
Yeah, the first year and then, yeah, so then in March of twenty-six would be when the six thousand nine hundred annual fee would be.
All right. Would I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, Rick has moved.
Second.
And Zach has seconded to set up an agreement with.
So it was in the budget, yeah.
A paternity?
Yeah, I'm not sure how you pronounce it. So this is just approval for me to sign the agreement.
Okay, and it was in the budget, so we're just moving forward. Okay, any other? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Right. Public Works, Garrett.
Um, I got a quote for a new, it's a, all of the snowing. When the last storm, I went and did sidewalks and our blade is pretty much shot. I mean, everything's really loose on it. We just have one now that turns to the side. And this one has relocated this way and that way, and then it has little wings on the side so you can go wider, and then you can turn them all the way back and back drag out parking spots and everything. It looks like it's pretty slick and we can use it, you know, just not for sidewalks. But if, if I get done piling snow, I can push, push it in a pile too, you know, with a regular blade. Just, just doesn't work the same, so.
Let the state borrow that for cleaning our yard?
What's that?
Said let the state borrow that to clean our yard? So what's the width on this one here?
Uh, it's eight foot.
And it goes up to eleven, right?
Yeah. When you, those sides come out. It's kind of nice if you can, if you're plowing one way, you can keep it this way and open it up here, push it out to the side. Is it similar to Todd's? Yes. Yep.
Those are, yeah, those are serious. Yeah, very handy. Garrett, how much is it?
Eleven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and fourteen cents.
And if you approve this, I, there is money left in this, in the budget this year, so I would like approval to go ahead and purchase this with the sheriff's budget, so that, because didn't say we're not going to stop.
So we're covered on the budget for an American? I make motion to.
Okay, it's been moved to approve purchasing a snow wing for eleven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Is there any further discussion? What were you going to do with your old one?
Thought about selling it or putting it up for, I think we'll put a new blade on it and see if somebody wants to purchase it.
What is the value of that, do you think?
I don't, probably not a whole lot, but maybe five hundred dollars.
I'm trying to remember what we got out of that one. I'd say probably just fifteen hundred, if you put a new blade on it.
How much is a new blade?
Hmm, I think it's only eighty dollars or a hundred and twenty. I can't remember for sure. Remember what the school got from your surplus.
What have, what do you, we have to do to get the surplus and actually sell it? Because this might be a good time to sell it.
Yeah.
Rather than wait until the summer.
Um, I think.
Council has to declare surplus, and then if it, if you think it values over twenty-five hundred, then you'd have to get appraisers, appraisers on it.
Otherwise, you can just do a silverback.
Well, if it's under the twenty-five hundred, then we could just sell it, yeah, advertise it to sell.
I make a motion to declare surplus.
Okay, just before we do that, should we approve, we have a motion for to purchase this one. Shall we do that? All those in favor say aye.
Right.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and now Dan.
Yeah, I make a motion to surplus the old, because it's your snowplow blade. Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to surplus the old or the present blade? Any other questions or thoughts on that?
And that's just the cutting edge that you put on there, right?
Yes.
Now, what did those cost?
That's what we.
That's what we were, the, we were talking, eighty to a hundred and twenty, I can't remember.
So we'll be under that threshold? Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded to surplus, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so then that brings us to the mayor's report, and. In your packet was a letter from Pennington County Board of Commissioners. And at their recent meeting. They determined that there is a need to study the impact of utility scale alternative energy systems. In Penny County, and to evaluate whether their current regulations address. Health, safety, and welfare, so during their November nineteenth meeting. They adopted an ordinance, but they also put a one-year moratorium on any issuing of permits. For land uses for utility scale alternative energy systems. And want to set up a task force, my question to you folks tonight, is there anyone that would like to serve on that task force? Seeing none, what is your general feeling about utility scale alternative energy systems? And I think this has something to do with that attempt to down on Highway forty-four. Where that, a company from Florida was going to put in solar and wind.
Wasn't New Underwood going to put one farther south than the ones that are there now, and like have that energy go into their city?
New Underwood, it already has a second one going.
There you have a second one going. And it, does it supply energy to them?
It does.
Like, I'm, I'm in favor for it, I mean, and property rights too, I feel. If someone purchased that land and wants to use it for that purpose, then that's a right, but that's just how it feels.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that?
Right, you know, if you. If you're a homeowner living north of New Underwood. That's not a real, pretty sight to look down on, that, just silver reflections, like. Six hundred acres of mirrors down there.
Yeah, definitely ugly, definitely.
Definitely a while to get used to, I come from Rapid, and I think, man, they got a lot of water out there, why is that?
That's what I thought the first time.
Well, you've actually got called to a couple fires out there because of the sunshine just right, and then it makes it look like.
But it wasn't a fire?
Nope, it was just the reflection, it was a certain way.
It might frown if you pull up with a boat on.
Okay, so we don't have any volunteers at this point, and have mixed emotions in terms of how that should. Or, about the task force. Being, Stan, would you be interested in serving on it?
No.
Okay, with that being said, I do think we need to be at the table. So I might put my name out there and see if, if what that might get. What it might involve in, um, yeah.
What would the task force consist of?
I don't, it just says, all I know is what's in this word.
Lots of eating.
Means.
Lots of arguing, and guessing someone will be very heated.
Okay. Alright, the second thing I was going to address tonight was talk about. Housing Hanson subdivisions, there's still one governor's house. That hasn't been purchased yet, so if anyone's looking for that. Or would need that house, Ron Scadine or Trent Pulis would be someone to contact. I also wanted to update on the Echo Valley housing, sometimes I hear people say that we don't have housing here in Wall, but actually. There's been eight lots sold in Echo Valley, and the city has received their portion of. Those lot sales, which amount to a hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Three of the eight lots sold are affordable lots, and are for affordable homes. And then there's been five other lots out of the twenty-four that are available. Remember that totally, there's forty-one lots that can still occur in that development. Another thing that I learned was that the Cheyenne McGriff, who is the real estate agent, has three builders lined up. So some, the feds lowered interest rate today, and I don't know what that means, but they said that would be good for housing. So if someone wants to purchase a lot, she's got builders that are ready to build, so I wanted to share that.
What was that name again, Trent Pulis?
Pulis, P U L I S, and he's the one that's put in the housing in the Hanson Development. And then she's got three builders lined up for the Echo Valley.
Mary, is the, the house that's available in the Hanson Division, is that finished?
The governor's house is ready, yes, and there's one other one that I understand's been purchased, it just hasn't been finalized, so. But that was a stick-built one, so it's a very nice one, Mike has mentioned to us before, what a nice home that. Both of those two are, that they stick-built that.
I seen a lot of. Vehicles were stopped in the back of the pickup headed out there last couple days, did somebody?
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think they might have been doing some, are we talking about the one furthest northeast, the one that sold?
Northeast, yeah.
Uh, I think they were doing some custom finishing stuff that the people had requested, when I was old. Changing some stuff up a little bit.
Okay. Right. So, anyway, we definitely have housing available, lots to build on, we have builders to build. So it doesn't get any better than that, okay, and I also just wanted to update the council, that I reached. Out to the city attorney to help write the wildland seat-based contract. And that's being negotiated, I understand it's on its way to peer, so we'll see what they say about the contract that. Garrett, Carolyn and I, Stan helped work on, did I miss somebody? Rick, I think you were involved with that too, okay, that's all I have for my report tonight, and. Is there any items for discussion, no action will be taken? Aye.
Uh, I was wondering with the medical dispensary license. Has anything came of that, did we give them the proper paperwork that they needed now?
I have not received payment. Are the fee board, cause it, what, a year had passed, so.
So they haven't paid, how long do you hold on to that for then?
I don't know, it's not really an ordinance on that, I was gonna reach out to them, I just never had an opportunity to do everything, but. I'll try to reach out to them.
Okay, any other items or questions to come before the council? Okay, we do have a need for executive session.
I make a motion, we go into executive session for purpose of discussing legal issues. According to STCL one dash twenty-seven dash one point five parentheses eight.
Second.
Okay, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Oh, did he say that?
Yeah.
Okay, motion approved, thank you so much, don't forget a cookie for the road. So Zach, can you pass those cookies around? Okay, I will declare us out of executive session. The next council meeting is going to be January ninth at, at six thirty. And there is no action at this time, and so I will declare the meeting adjourned.